All right, if I can call this meeting to order. Ask you all to stand so we can do the pledge. And Kristin, if you'd be kind enough to lead us in the pledge since you're freshly back from your college reunion at Notre Dame.
Thank you. And a former Girl Scout leader. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Want to welcome everybody here. Well, we've got two sets of minutes to cover from an administrative standpoint. First motion before us is to consider and act upon the minutes of a combined Board of Selectment, Board of Finance, public budget hearing from March 20th, 2012. Can I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
I'll second. Any discussion?
I just note that last time I had postponed these minutes because I know that Selectmen Walsh had some edits which we haven't heard. And I also mentioned last time, I think, I don't want to wait so long in terms of acting on minutes, so I would like to act.
May I suggest we table it and perhaps take it up later in the meeting?
That would be good.
Jen, will you make sure we get back to that before the end of the meeting?
Absolutely.
It's a great idea.
Is that a motion to table?
Motion to table.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor? So that's been tabled. Next up, to hear, consider and act upon the meetings from the regular meeting of May 16th, 2012. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
I'll second that. Any comments?
Yes. An amendment. In the minutes, Kevin Cole's term is listed incorrectly, so we'd like to, it'd be helpful to correct that item to list his term from November 2008 to November 2013.
Okay. Is that a motion to amend?
Motion to amend.
Okay, I'll second that. Any discussion on the amendment? Ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the minutes stand amended. Any other motions or amendments, discussion? We ready to vote?
Yes.
All right. To accept the minutes as amended? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those are down. Good. All right, now to the fun part of the evening. We have a couple of special people to recognize here. And first up, we have recognition of the Girl Scouts of Connecticut, 2012 Gold Award recipient, Tessa Duke. Tessa, are you here? All right. Hi, Tessa. Let's see. It also says we've got a few friends of yours here. We've got Donna Stupak, Girl Scouts of Connecticut Council's Coastal Fairfield Gold Award Committee member and mentor to Tessa. Donna, are you here?
I don't know if she's here yet.
Okay.
She's trying to talk.
We actually have a couple of big events going on here today, so parking is somewhat limited. Paula Fromm?
That would be me.
All right. Paula, welcome and thank you. Coastal Fairfield area chair for the Council Gold Award Committee. We do have a proclamation here. And we normally do this a little differently, but for today. Tessa, could you come up and stand at the podium so we could both properly recognize you? This is a, we're giving Tessa recognition from the town of Fairfield on behalf of her achieving the Gold Award or being recognized with a Gold Award. And for those of you, perhaps like myself, that aren't as familiar with the Girl Scouts, I guess I'll translate this, as has been explained to me, this is the equivalent of a Boy Scout getting the Eagle Award. So it's a tremendous accomplishment in that regard. And with that being said, just kind of set things up. On Sunday, June 3rd, 2012, Tessa Duke was one of 57 girls from around the state of Connecticut who received the Girl Scout Gold Award. This is the highest number of Gold Award Girl Scouts in the five-year history of the Girl Scouts of Connecticut for one year. Tessa is the first Girl Scout from Fairfield to earn this prestigious award since the formation of the Girl Scouts in Connecticut in the fall of 2007. And whereas, the Gold Award is the highest award in Girl Scouting, which may be earned by a Girl Scout in grades nine through 12, for many, the leadership skills, organizational skills, and sense of community and commitment that come from going for the gold set the foundation for a lifetime of active citizenship. The Gold Award is an award with national standards put in place by the Girl Scouts of the United States of America. This award acknowledges an individual's accomplishments, leadership, commitment, creativity, and personal effort in trying to make the world a better place. And whereas, the Gold Award project, which each girl must complete, is to address a community issue and improve or eliminate that issue, the achievement of the Gold Award makes a girl understand what a difference one person can make, what one girl in leadership role can do, and how one person's vision can inspire positive change. Something, a lesson for all of us elected officials to understand and grasp. And whereas, for her Gold Award project, Tessa designed and implemented four different theatrical workshops at Paul Newman's Hole-in-the-Wall Gang camp in Ashford, Connecticut, for children ages six through 16 afflicted with cancer or blood disorders. This project added up to approximately 100 hours of community service and took almost three years to complete. Tasks included the search and design of the project, preparing the project proposal and approvals, badge work, design and implementation of four full days of programming, organization of a volunteer group who travel up with Tessa for each session, leaving a legacy program and a scrapbook that the camp could use, and then completing the final Gold Award scrapbook and interview. Now therefore, I, Michael C. Tetra, first selectman of the town of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim, June 3rd, 2012, is Tessa Duke Day. Congratulations, Tessa. Actually, let me say that out loud. I just, we're here to recognize Tessa on behalf of the town for everything she's done, both for Girl Scouts, and more importantly, for our community, by leading by example for all of our young people in terms of setting a standard of community service and public interest. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Let's read here.
Yes, smile and face the cameras. When you do good things, you have to look for the camera.
Mr. Tetra, could you face over, please? Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Tessa, would you like to address the group for a little bit? Say words. Half the mic, please, if you would.
Okay.
Do you want to say something too? When she's done. Sorry.
Hi, everyone. This project was so incredibly meaningful for me to do. Theater has been one of my passions since I was five years old, and I love working with children. And when I went about choosing a project to do for this Gold Award, I thought of a very special friend of my mother's and I, who passed away from cancer. And she really gave me the strength to believe in myself, and I decided to go for a project where I could help others just really live their lives and just be happy. And we're a better place to do that than the Hole-in-the-Wall Gang camp in Ashford. It's just a wonderful environment with people who are just so ready to just pursue anything. And when I approached the camp director, Scotty Stevens, with the idea, he was so open to it and really wanted to make it work. So working there was really a treat for me and my volunteers, and it was just a really great experience. And I would encourage a lot of Girl Scouts to pursue this award. It's definitely very fulfilling to have. Thank you.
Kristin, you were involved with Girl Scouts. Do you have any follow-up comments?
I did just want to give my respect and admiration to Tessa and to her mom, who has been a leader in Girl Scouts and I know a model and mentor for her as well. This really is an incredible honor, and you are a role model for all girls and for boys, too. But I definitely appreciate what you've done and am very, very grateful. As we talked about a few minutes ago, it's not as popular to stay with Girl Scouts through middle school and high school, and it's a tremendous thing that you've done, that you're clearly not afraid to be who you are and that you've made such a big difference. So thank you.
Thank you again. All right. Next up, some more special recognition. Next up, we're recognizing U.S. Presidential Scholar in the Arts recipient, Alex Bayer. Alex, are you here? Great. If you could come on up here. We've got a few folks that are here with Alex. Misty Bear, Alex's mom. Misty, where are you?
Yeah, I'm here.
There you are. Hiding in back.
I'm here.
Okay. Getting lost in the forest again, Misty? We also have Ross Novick, Alex's teacher at Fairfield Ward High School. Mr. Novick will accompany Alex to Washington, D.C. to be honored with a Teacher Recognition Award from the U.S. Department of Education at the annual 2012 ceremony, which is being presented by President Barack Obama on June 16th. Since 1983, each Presidential Scholar has been offered the opportunity to invite his or her most inspiring and challenging teacher to the annual ceremony. Alex chose Mr. Novick as his most influential teacher. Mary Hoag, incoming Fairfield Wood High School PTA president, is here also. Hey, Mary, how are you? Good. Where's Mr. Novick?
Right here.
Oh, very good. Thank you for all the work you do. We've got a proclamation here for Alex that I will read. And again, on behalf of the town of Fairfield, thank you for your achievements, the good recognition you're doing, and showing that our high school system really pays off and giving you the opportunity to achieve this much. Whereas, the U.S. Presidential Scholar in the Arts Award is the highest honor that can be bestowed upon an artistically talented graduating high school senior. The award is presented on behalf of the President of the United States, and selection is based upon academic, civic, and artistic achievement. Each year, 20 students from around the nation are chosen by the White House Commission on Presidential Scholars and named a U.S. Presidential Scholar in the Arts. Among the students chosen this year is Alex Bayer, a senior at Fairfield Ward High School. And whereas, the White House Commission on Presidential Scholars selects honored students annually based on their academic success, artistic excellence, essays, school evaluations, and transcripts, as well as evidence of community service, leadership, and demonstrated commitment to high ideals. Of the 3 million students expected to graduate from high school this year, more than 3,000 candidates qualified for the 2012 awards determined by the outstanding performance at the College Board SAT and ACT exams, and through nominations made by chief state school officers or the Foundation for Advancement in the Arts Nationwide Young Arts Competition. And whereas, since 1983, each Presidential Scholar has been offered the opportunity to invite his or her most inspiring and challenging teacher to the annual ceremony, which will be held on June 16th, 2012, in Washington, D.C. And where they will be honored with a Teacher Recognition Award from the U.S. Department of Education, Alex Bayer will receive a Presidential Scholar Medallion at this special ceremony and has chosen Ross Novick as his most influential teacher. And whereas, hailed by the Hartford Current as a sensation with formidable technique, Alex Bayer already has an impressive array of concert appearances nationally and internationally. He began his music studies at age four. Is that true?
Yeah.
Really? Has been studying with Yoshi Hakimodo for the past seven years and is currently enrolled in the Juilliard Pre-College Program. Alex has performed and directed many benefit concerts, including those for Project Learn, Music for Youth, Mercy Learning Center, and Kids Empowered by Your Support. His popular Sundays at Four series has raised over $4,000 for a number of music organizations. Now therefore, I, Michael C. Tetra, first selectman of the town of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim, June 6th, 2012, as Alex Bayer Day in the town of Fairfield. Alex, congratulations. Just to show I'm ambidextrous, I'm going to use this mic. I did want to recognize Ross Novick for his work in this, and we have a certificate for Ross, for being chosen the 2012 Presidential Scholar in the Arts by Alex Bayer as Alex's most influential teacher and for being honored with a Teacher Recognition Award for the U.S. Department of Education at a special ceremony with the President of the United States. The town of Fairfield thanks you for your outstanding service as a Fairfield educator and appreciates your positive influence in the lives of your students. Alex, congratulations.
I'll just, I'll pop over to this mic for just a second. I just wanted to thank Alex because despite all those amazing, or maybe not despite, those amazing accomplishments were tremendous gifts to the community in many ways. And he used, used, and has used and will use his gifts to make a difference as well, as you heard, with all the benefits that you've done. So you're sharing your talents in so many ways, and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex, here. How much did you want to say?
Yeah, yeah, sure, sure. I just want to thank a couple of people. I don't know if this works. First of all, my mom. I guess she's awesome.
Ah.
And secondly, of course, Mr. Novick. Since freshman year, I've had him as my homeroom teacher, and for two years, we worked together in English and really tossing around some profound ideas. And he's really helped me as a writer and a reader and a person and a thinker. And so I just want to thank him. And also, Mr. Coyne, who's also here from the school. And really, yeah. And really, Ward as a school, because it's been such a great environment. I've had to make a lot of sacrifices in terms of trying to balance music and academics, but Ward has, you know, been really nice about accompanying those needs in both areas. And that's really fostered quite an environment for me. So I thank the school and I thank the town for being such a kind, kind audience to a lot of my performances and providing so many mentors for me. So thank you. It's been a great, great experience.
Thank you again.
Sure. It's been the highest of honors to work with Alex Bayer. He is a fantastic student. He's a very good English student. It is not his strongest class, but he is unabashedly curious and completely willing to be challenged and to have me constantly ask him questions and to sit through hours of writing conferences to steadily improve his intellect and his writing ability. So really, it's been a dream working with him, and this is just fantastic to be recognized as well. And I'd also like to thank Mr. Coyne for creating an environment and a culture in a school where someone like Alex can really grow and be worthy of such a high honor. So, thank you.
Wow.
Can I say one more thing?
Certainly, Kristin.
Quick thing. I feel proud, very proud, of our young people today. Thank you.
All right, then, moving on with the rest of our exciting agenda for today. Kristin, it, I'd like to make a motion that we take the next item out of order, that we move to item 13, out of respect for Mr. Lesser's schedule.
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion?
Item number 12.
Item 12.
I'll second the motion for item 12.
All right. Item 12, then. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Lesser, you have the floor.
Thank you. Just very briefly, you have an easement in front of you.
Actually, let me, let me get this motion on the table while you're getting your papers organized. Item 12, to hear, consider and act upon a request from the town attorney to authorize, somebody could ask the folks in act just to be a little quieter. To hear, consider and act upon a request from the town attorney to authorize Michael C. Tetra, first selectman of the town of Fairfield, to execute on behalf of the town of Fairfield, a conservation and public recreation easement and agreement under the Open Space and Watershed Land Acquisition Program with the state of Connecticut for financial assistance to acquire permanent interest in the land known as the Bridgeport Diocese property, O.S.W.A. 61, and to manage said land as open space land pursuant to Section 7-131D of the Connecticut Genius Statutes. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
I'll second. The item is now before us. Mr. Lesser, if you'd take us through what we're up to.
Just very briefly, and I wasn't involved, this was about 10 years ago, the town acquired about just under 38 acres.
Perhaps, Stan, if you could speak at the mic so that we could hear that clearer.
About 10 years ago, the town acquired just about 38 acres of land from the diocese. And from what I understand, at that time, there was a state grant that was given to purchase that. As part of the conditions of the grant and also statutes, the town was required to give to the state a conservation easement on the property, and that's what you have in front of you. It's my understanding the easement has been fully negotiated by prior town attorneys. It's ready for signature, and I think that if the Board of Selectment authorizes you to sign it, it should probably then go to the RTM, get their approval. But this is, from what I understand, a requirement of this grant program, and that's about all that I have to say. It should be done. I think we need to do it. It's all set to go.
Okay. Any discussion?
Why hasn't the process taken so long, just out of curiosity?
I haven't the slightest idea, quite honestly. I know that, I think it might have fallen through the cracks, quite frankly. That's about all I know. You know, this came across my desk as something that needed to be done, and I took a look at it, and I, I don't think we have any choice. It's something that does need to be done, so. And I think that there were negotiations, but as you can see, the easement is basically to keep the property the way it is. You can have trails and passive recreation. That's about it.
Okay. Go ahead.
So effectively, this doesn't change anything about how we are currently dealing with the property or managing or using the property?
From what I understand, no. It's the same. We can maintain trails. You might be able to put additional trails in, things like that, but it's basically for passive hiking and things like that.
Am I, is, is the transaction, the transfer of ownership of the property complete except for this? Is everything else done?
That's what I understand. I understand we've owned this for quite a while. It's just, this hasn't been, hasn't been done.
Okay. Was this listed as kind of part of the closing checklist or closing documentation that had to be done, or any?
I don't know. All I know is that it is a requirement under the program and under the statute that we give this easement. I, I'm not privy to what the checklist was at the time. I'm not even sure who represented us when we did it.
Mr. Walsh, did you have any follow-up questions on this?
I presume Mr. Saxel represented us on it. I was on the RTM when this property transferred, and that was probably?
10 years, I understand.
Eight, 10 years ago. Something like that. I was going to say, at least that far back. And is the reason we have to do this because we took money from the state?
Yes.
How much money did we take?
I don't know. If you look at the preamble to this document, it talks about the grant program.
Yeah, I read that, yep. But I didn't see anything saying that, you know, whereas you took this much money.
No, doesn't say the amount.
I mean, it pretty much says, we just have to give up our rights. And I guess the question is, I don't have any recollection that this was a requirement when we did the transaction, when the transaction was being talked about. I thought we paid, I thought we paid the diocese money for the property.
Money that we got from the state. This is under the state grant program. That's why we're giving this to the state. The easement goes, the easement is from the town to the state of Connecticut.
Yes.
They're the easement holder.
Yes. That, which means the state must have given us funds to?
Yes.
For the, for the purchase. And we don't have any information regarding what those, what the definitions or what the requirements were of when we did this at that point. And how did this all of a sudden just come up?
I think it's been in the works, and I think this is the completion of the project.
Yeah, I know you've only been here a couple of months, but in the works for, in the works for 10 years seems like a hell of a long time to be in the works for after you first, you get a transfer of a piece of property. Does this have to be done today?
I don't think so.
All right. I mean, I just feel, without a lot of information, that?
It has to go to the RTM also.
Yeah. I think I feel, well, sir, we have one more meeting before the RTM schedule comes out? We'd have one more meeting two weeks from now.
Yeah, I don't know. The RTM has traditionally taken, I think, July off and met in August.
Yeah, but is there time to, for us to hear it at our next Board of Selectment meeting to vote on it and get it on their calendar?
Not to committees.
Not to committees.
No. It's not going, it's not going on the June calendar. Now, it's waited 10 years, so a couple of months isn't going to matter.
I don't think it's going to matter. I really don't. And if you have questions, I can try to get the answers to them.
The only thing I'd ask, to be fair to Mr. Lesser and to the process, would be if we can be, maybe you can get back to me with a specific question so I can get those four out and we can make sure those get answered appropriately so that we get those.
I think a lot of this would be able to be handled if someone contacted the town clerk and had her pull the RTM minutes from the meeting where this was approved. I think it's going to go a long way to tell you what the transaction was, what was supplied at that point in time, and to tell us what happened. I don't even know whether we have to go back to the Board of Selectment minutes. I think, I think it's going to be simple enough to go to the RTM, the minutes, and maybe to get them and disperse them to us prior to the next meeting so we have at least a little bit of background.
All right. Well, those, I guess my question is, is that going to answer enough of your questions or?
I think it will. I just want something to, you know, without any definitive information here today at the table, to tell me that, yes, we took X number of dollars, whether it be 10% of the price or 100% of the price from the state, and just to confirm that this was the deal, that we were supposed to sign this. And I understand the lag, I guess.
Well, perhaps.
I believe it's statutory, but.
But more to the point, I think the minutes might say, my concern is the minutes are incomplete in terms of they, even some of the discussion might not have been written down quite as completely. So there's some way to go back to the contract that this was executed on or the deed, perhaps, whatever it is that would document the terms of sale.
If that's what you want, let me see what I can find.
Yeah, and I'm not saying that this, I agree that if they gave us money, they're going to want some strings attached to, and that's not what I'm saying. All I'd like to say is somebody say, yeah, we took this property over for X number of dollars. In exchange for that, we agreed with the state that we would take a grant, and this was part of it. And we're just buttoning it up at that point in time. That's really all I want to hear.
And perhaps to the button it up point, that we make sure that this is the only outstanding item, so that we're, when we're done with this, when we're done.
That's fine.
The only thing I'd ask my colleagues on the board is that when Mr. Lesser gets back to us, if the documentation provides doesn't answer all the questions?
Sure.
You could get, let me know on that so we can get what other information, so the next time we bring this up, we can just get this done.
That sounds great.
But.
That's fine.
All right.
Thanks, Stan, I appreciate it.
Thank you. May I have a motion to postpone?
So moved.
And do we have a date that we're postponing it to?
To the next Board of Selectment meeting, which is?
July 5th?
I thought we had one on 14 days.
July 20th? July 20th? Is that enough time?
June 20th.
June 20th? Sorry?
Yeah, yeah.
Postpone to a date certain, June 20th?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion from the body? Back to the board. Ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Stan. Mr. Lesser, thank you.
Special technical order.
Back to the agenda. Mr. Walsh, we tabled the minutes for March 20th.
Okay.
Just to give you a chance to see if you have any comments to add.
All right.
So we'll pick those up at the end of the agenda. Jen will remind us to come back if that's all right. All right. Next up, we have resignations from the Penfield Reef Lighthouse Preservation Committee. Dave Agonis has resigned, and Mike Jayly has resigned. We had appointed some people to this committee last meeting. We'll look at getting new members appointed on this to fill these vacancies also. Next up, item seven, the Ethics Commission. Is Mr. Dave Schmidt here? There he is, Dave. Good to see you, Mr. Schmidt. May I have a motion to accept the appointment of Mr. Dave Schmidt, a Republican from 61 Partridge Lane, for a term of November 11 to November 13 to the Ethics Commission?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. All right. It is noted here, this requires a unanimous vote by the Board of Selectmen, and then it does go on to the RTM for additional approval. Any discussion?
No. I'd just like to thank Mr. Schmidt for attending. I know you were up the last time. And, you know, with the appointment to the Ethics Commission, I think the public just needed to have you present in case some questions came up. But I really appreciate you coming. I've read your resume, and I think you'd be the perfect member for this commission. So thank you for attending today.
Any comments?
Question. Mr. Schmidt, thank you for being here, and I appreciate your interest. And my understanding from conversations with you is that you have some interest in also providing some support for some workshops in town. Is that correct? And I wondered if you could maybe come to the microphone.
Dave, we're going to ask you to come up to the mic up here.
You're referring to the conversations we've had?
Yes, about that.
This is separate from my serving on the Ethics Commission. But in my role at Fairfield University, I run the program in applied ethics. We are interested in expanding our outreach to the community. One example of that is the Ethics Breakfast we've had at the bookstore in the past year. But we're interested in exploring developing a workshop on ethics for government and elected officials. I've had conversations with a number of people in the town government and other interested parties. There seems to be a lot of enthusiasm for this, so I think we're moving forward on it and expect to develop a workshop.
Thank you. I bring that up just as a comment and follow-up, because Mr. Schmidt clearly has an interest in not only serving in this capacity, but going beyond and really helping us in the community dealing with these important issues. So I think you're an excellent appointee, and very glad that you're willing to serve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, as I mentioned at the last Board of Selectment meeting, I've had a chance to work with Mr. Schmidt on the panels. I've had a chance to visit on others. I think when you look at one of the benefits our town gets from having a resource like Fairfield University in our midst, Mr. Schmidt is one of those, because he adds this kind of value to our town, our town government and community service. So I want to thank you for stepping up. Thank you on behalf of the town, but also in terms of kind of helping build the bonds between the university and the town in that regard also.
You're welcome.
Any further comments from the board? Any comments from the public? All right, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Jim, you'll have our office get in touch with Dave and confirm when he shows up at the RTM. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, next up, an appointment to the Shelfish Commission. Robert Billick, did I say that right?
Yep.
All right. A Republican from 319 Wakeman Road, may I have a move to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Go ahead.
Mr. Billick, thank you for your willingness to serve. And I appreciate the fact that though you referenced in your, the questions that you answered, that you've been involved since you were young in activities around Shelfish. And it seems to me that though it's not your professional area of expertise, as with Mr. Schmidt, it's something that you really have put your heart into and will be an added, an asset for this committee. So thank you very much for being willing to serve.
Any further comments?
The only thing is more administratively, is he replacing some of the seven people that are listed?
Yes. Mr. Ed Crowley. His term has expired.
Okay. Quick. Mr. Billick, thank you for willing to be willing to serve.
Just adding on to that, the, I think, as I've learned throughout the past year, there's certain cultural characteristics of Fairfield and Shelfish. It's certainly one of them, and we've had a chance to talk with the Shelfish Commission on several occasions concerning what's taking place there, what we can do, how we can expand it, and how big an important part of the Fairfield recreation scene that is. I've been very impressed, and I want to thank Mr. Billick for stepping up and offering to help us with that. Are we ready to vote?
So that the public can see who he is. If he doesn't mind stepping up to the microphone, that would be wonderful. For the viewers at home. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any comments you'd like to say before we vote?
No, I just, I'm really interested in being on the Shelfish Commission, because I've done that all my life as a little boy in Darien. And I've clamped here, and I've clammed in Block Island and Nantucket and different places. And we have a wonderful resource, and I think we can improve it. And I'd like to be a part of making that happen.
All right, thank you, and thank you, Ron Tarrick. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Billick. All right, next up, the Fairfield Ward High School Roof Building Committee. Do we want to take these one at a time, or as a group? We do have one adjustment to make. Mr. Richard Abramson withdrew his name from consideration during, due to time constraints earlier in the week. I believe you're both copied on that email?
Yes.
So we have items two. Do we want to take these one at a time, or as a group? Any preference?
I don't have a preference.
Okay, that leaves us with six. We would come back and look for a seventh member. The charge says between 5 and 11, so we have some flexibility in terms of how many members we appoint for this. All right, then, may I have a motion to accept as nominees for the Fairfield Ward High School Roof Building Committee, and this would also go on to the RTM. Mr. Saul Bricks, Republican, 785 Churchill Road. Mr. Jerome Demner, Democrat, 70 Gateridge Road. Mr. Walter Dunney, unaffiliated, 54 Cedarhurst Lane. Mr. Douglas Jones, Democrat, 1304 Fairfield Woods Road. Mr. Michael Money, unaffiliated, 401 Fairfield Woods Road. And Malcolm Rowe, unaffiliated, 100 Arbor Drive. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion from the board? Can I just have a show of hands? Who else here is? Okay. Boom, boom. Can I see? All right. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Who are we? Let me go through this.
Mr. Bricks?
Bricks. We're missing Saul.
Saul, no. I didn't see him.
I don't think Saul's here. So it's everybody but Saul. That's what it is. Saul currently serves on the Town Facilities Commission, so he's well-known to this board and the town, and was nominated by the Town Facilities Commission to serve on this committee.
He also has a specialty in roofs that he's been doing with IBM for many, many years. So it's actually a specialty.
Any discussion from the board?
Kristen seems to want to see some.
Okay. I just noted that a few of those of you who are up for a vote today had asked for information about the charge and further details. So we, I'm sure, will be sure that you have the charge. And the First Selectmen has been doing a great job in terms of orienting with building committees. I know that with Riverfield, that happened. So I just hope that that will continue, so that you are clear about what your duties and responsibilities are, and what the goals are for this project.
Just to build on that, just to be clear on where we are in the process, based on the vote here today, assuming that that passes, the next step would be going to the RTM and getting sworn in. Shortly thereafter, we'd schedule an orientation session to take you through the building process, and also the resources that you have from the town to help through this process going forward, be it purchasing, be it finance, and also some orientation into Robert's Rules and the Freedom of Information Act, to make sure that all the discussions and meetings the board, your committee has, will be handled appropriately. Currently, the ward roof, we've asked the Town Facilities Commission to kind of push that along and keep that rolling. So we have a contractor that's been hired. We're looking at a contract administrator, or construction administrator at this point, to help facilitate the process. We do have an architect that was on board and helped with the design of the process up to this point. So a number of things are in place. We hope we can facilitate the committee's getting up to speed as fast as we can. It does look like this is going to be a three to four-year project overall. So there's plenty of time for you all to get acclimated as to what happens from that point. Any further discussion from the board?
Just wondering if there are other outstanding questions that people have. I hope that you will. Feel free to contact the First Selectmen's office and as well. I'll offer myself. I won't speak for Selectman Walsh, but I'm sure he's just as available. We want to support, we've all voiced this at this table, want to support our projects being done well. And so we're here to support you.
I'd just like to thank all the proposed members. In reading your resumes, do you have vastly different experiences, and it looks like a very well-rounded group for this project? What different specialties? Some I've worked with before in a number of projects, including Mr. Jones on our RTM for many years. And I've also worked with Mr. Bricks substantially. And I know he's got the expertise in the roofing business, having done roofs for all sorts of various buildings for IBM during his career with IBM. So I think it's going to be a great group, and I wish you Godspeed in getting the roofs done. Thanks.
I think I'd like to build on both those, and thank you all for your volunteer efforts in putting this together. I think what we've tried to do is build a balance committee with some different perspectives and different backgrounds. And while we have a mix of some people who've been very involved in the town, we also, as one of our goals, have brought in some people that haven't been involved. And we hope that this will be a first experience for you, not a last experience, to kind of keep you involved for years to come. Because that's really the strength of our community, is the number of people that volunteer and help our town be as special as it is. With that, any comments from the public? All right, back to the
And the page is quite generous.
Yes, it is. The, all right, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes, we are.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, and thank you all. My office will be in touch in terms of just confirming dates and times for the RTM subcommittee, so you can be involved in that. But again, thank you very much for making the commitment to our town, and our, in this case, our school system, and getting this done. All right, next up, Fairfield Ludlow High School Windows Building Committee Charge. Just to, may I, let's start with the motion. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay, just to intro this as to where we stand. We've currently had an ED spec approved by the Board of ED. We're writing up the charge. At this point, the windows project itself is still undergoing some tests that are being administered, or monitored, or managed, if you will, by the central office staff. As it comes out of that, we will then get more formal in terms of getting the project defined and a building committee underway. You may remember there were some initial tests done last October that identified there were some PCBs involved in the windows. That led to an initial request for some money in late February that came at the last minute. The Board of Finance, we pushed that off because of the urgency and timing. We asked, I specifically asked Dr. Title in Central Office to pick this up and get this through on a very timely basis, so we could define the problem, make sure it gets taken care of, and get the windows project on track. So that's where we stand. This is one step in the path in terms of defining the committee charge. So any discussion at this point?
In regard to the project itself, is it, when is it anticipated that the windows are going to be installed? Is it next, so not this coming, not this summer, which we're about to enter into?
Mr. Collins here, and Mr. Mayor Beedon, I'll probably refer that question to them. It's my understanding, Jim, until we finish the testing, we haven't defined the scope. But I will defer to Mr. Collins. Could you come up and address the group?
Good. How are you doing?
Thanks, Tom.
The hazardous material testing is a four-step process. We're wrapping up step two, which is to identify and build a history in the building of where there's PCB, asbestos, and lead. Once they get that information in, they then have to go in and do core samples. That's the third test. They actually drill holes into the masonry to see if any of the hazardous material leaked into the masonry. Once they get all that information together, they continue to build a history and come up with an action plan. It has to be approved by the federal agency EPA in Massachusetts and the Connecticut local DEEP. Once that gets approved, then we can put together a cost estimate for the hazardous material. Get an architect to do a cost estimate for the window replacement, put the two together, and we have a funding request. Based on all that information, we were hoping something like October, November, to maybe have a funding request in place. Our goal would be to try and start the windows in summer of 2013, although that'll be based on all of the hazardous material we find, what the action plan is approved by the state, both states. Okay?
So at this point in time, pending things that come up with the environmental stuff, you're still thinking that we can possibly get this in in the summer of 2013? And the goal is, at this point, to have the entire project in over one summer?
Based on how many windows, the TFC originally came up with a report from the architect of about 51% of the windows needed to be replaced. That's a pretty large school. I'm not sure a company big enough could do 51% of the windows in one summer. That would be 470-something windows. That could be a lot. So it might have to be two summers.
But none will be done during the school year?
No.
All right. I just wanted to get an estimate, because we're forming a building committee, and I think the public should have some sense of timing of what for this project's going. Thank you.
Kristen?
Hi, Mr. Collins. Thank you for being here. Just to follow up something you just said, the TFC report suggested 51% windows, and I know there were different numbers. So will it be the building committee who will make that decision, or how's that? I'm just curious in terms of how we talk about the charge.
It's a very good question, because the hazardous material will also drive what windows get replaced. The windows can have hazardous materials around them and even on them, the glazing. You know, if they come back heavily with hazardous material, it might warrant removing the window, even if it wasn't part of the architect's scheme or part of the 51%. But the goal was, you know, the Board of ED wanted to do all the windows on the school building. The TFC initially came up with only 146, then an architect did a report and study and said about 51% of the windows need to be replaced.
So there were actually three different numbers?
Correct.
So in the end
In the end, we need to see what the hazardous material is.
And then
Right.
The decision, once the data has been put forward, it will be evaluated and decided by the building committee then, at that point, I'm assuming?
Correct. There'll be an architect that'll look at all the data, the hazardous material, the action plan from the state, Massachusetts and Connecticut, and the building committee and work together on what the whole project will encompass and what the funding request will be. Okay? To the town bodies.
Thank you. Any further questions from the board, or okay to go to public comment at this point? I'm going to go to public comment. Any public comment? All right, thank you. Hope, sorry. Just come to the mic and identify yourself for everybody here and those in TV land.
Hi, I'm Meg Capidano, 170 Middlebrook Drive. As current PTA president of Osborne Hills School and the parent of three, I just wanted to make certain that the Board of Selectmen remembers Osborne Hills windows in your planning as the Fairfield Ludlow High School project moves forward. At that February 28th meeting, the Board of Selectmen and Joint Board of Finance meeting, it was decided that the windows project be postponed with the rationale that it made sense to bundle Osborne Hills together with the high school with the high school window project due to economy of scale. Since then, the testing at Osborne Hill has revealed PCVs in the caulking and glazing around the windows in two separate locations. Further testing was done, and that has not come back to us yet. But our parent community, our teachers, certainly feel that it's very important for our school, and that this stays on your front burner as you move forward with the high school window project.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? All right, thank you. Back to the board. Any further discussion here?
Can I ask Mr. Collins in regards to that public comment?
Just a minute. Mr. Collins, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the mic? Mr. Walsh?
Where does that stand with the bundling of these two projects?
Our intent is to try and bring both together.
So your intent would be to be coming back for a building committee for that project as well, so that they can, or to use the same building committee?
Probably use the same building committee. It'll be a similar project, similar testing, similar
Similar time?
Similar timeframe, we're hoping.
Where do you stand with the, you said there's a four-phase process?
There's a four-reporting process. We're in the second. We're waiting for the second report. We should have that soon that'll identify. What happened at Osborne Hill is similar to what happened at Ludlow High School. The first round of testing, some tests came back positive and higher than what the state would like to see. That warrants you to go in and do a professional cleaning with Hepa system and quite a strict process. And then you go back in and do those tests again. So we're waiting for those tests to come back. Once we get those, if everything's cleared, we go into the masonry testing, the core sampling, to see if any of it leaked into the masonry products or any structural members. And then we build the action plan for the two states, EPA and the DEEP. So our goal is to try and wrap the two of them together.
All right, thank you. Any further questions from the board? Are we ready to vote?
No.
She is.
Then you do have some further comments?
I do.
The floor is yours.
The one comment, I, this, I did raise that issue
The one comment, I, this, I did raise that issue back in February in terms of looking it together. I know we discussed it and voted that way. And I certainly, I think we're all in support of any economies of scale. That said, this today is a Ludlow Windows Building Committee charge. So for today, that's where we are. I think my comment, and I'm not going to make a motion, but put it out for a little bit of discussion, if you will. The last sentence of paragraph two of this charge reads that the LWVC, Ludlow Windows Building Committee, will follow all statutory requirements in regards to any energy savings or green initiatives. And I would suggest that we certainly are going to be following statutory requirements as we do in any project. So I suppose that in some respects, that's emphasis added, because we fully expect, as the Board of Selectmen and as all members of the central office, that that's what will happen. So I would suggest we either eliminate that sentence, or if we are going to, that we would also bring forward another highlight issue, which is in relation to safety and abatement standards, since that's certainly something there. I can go either way, but I just wanted to raise that issue with that sentence.
All right. Any further discussion on that point?
I don't, I'm willing to hear what you have to propose, I guess.
Well, I literally, if we were to keep the sentence, I would literally simply add after initiatives and safety and abatement standards. In other words, it's redundant in a sense. We are going to follow statutory requirements. This charge is simply highlighting that. So if we're going to highlight statutory requirements that we're going to follow, I would like to add those related to safety and abatement standards.
But would you be fine with just ending the sentence at statutory requirements, period? If all of these are statutes, and we say we're going to follow all statutes, then we don't have to really make it wordy?
Right.
I'd be willing at that, if that works.
That works, absolutely.
But you're the one, if you want to make the motion, I'll definitely second you.
Yeah, no, I, that's, I was interested in kind of having some discussion-
Sure.
-and hearing people's thoughts on it before making a motion. So sure, I move to strike the end of that sentence, beginning with in, the word in. So to end the sentence-
To add a period after requirements, how about that?
And strike the remainder of the sentence.
A second?
Second.
All right. Since you both weighed in, I'm totally okay with it, as opposed to having to list all the different statutory areas that we would follow.
Well, also, there's some confusion that if we missed one, we're only saying we want to follow those specific statutory requirements as opposed to all.
Yes, so, all right, thank you. In this case, any further discussion on the placement of the period and removal of the other words?
No.
All right, any comments from the public? All right, back to the board. On this amendment, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so the charge as amended is now before us. Any further discussion?
I just have a question, it's more of a discussion, not an amendment, because I know that this matches the last one we just talked about, about half, starting at five, even though we'd had previous conversations that the standard for building committees we had looked at, and there was reasoning why we talked about having it be five. But I just want to make sure it's the intent to still have more than five, because I still think that quorums become a problem, and the larger this is, the better, whether it at least be seven. So I just wanted to, just like you said the last time, that you would pretty much, you know, you would have seven, and you held, you know, you stood by that and did that with the last, we had a ward roof committee. I would like there to be at least some acknowledgement by our board that we plan to at least get it to seven people.
I acknowledge.
Okay, great.
And I think that what five to eleven lets us do, frankly, just what we did with the ward roof, is that somebody withdrew their name. If we had seven, we'd have to withdraw the whole motion. Now we let it get started, but we still have the ability to add members on, and during some of that initial phase, it keeps us from slowing down the project. That's but absolutely the intent.
Great.
The only other observation would be that it has been a challenge in some cases, coming up with members for building committees.
I got you, somebody.
The ward roof guys are all gone, right? So it's okay to say that we've had challenges finding folks.
Although you still need one there.
The, so that's part of our paid advertisement here. We do want more members for the ward roof building committee. But I think that lets us move forward, and to some degree, the more the merrier. The other thing we're trying to balance, I think, is because of this number of different projects we have going on right now, there's X number of people that are interested in building committees, so we want to make sure we staff them effectively before we get more folks in. The plus side is, this is an opportunity for us to find new volunteers, new people to get involved, and build on the experience that we've had. One of the good news pieces, I think, as we've gone through this process, there's a lot of very talented people with a lot of great background out there that have stepped up to volunteer their time, and it's really heartwarming on this side to see what, how many folks are willing to contribute time to the projects and get things done. With that, any further discussion on this?
No.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next, Director of Public Works, to hear, consider, and act upon a resolution to accept a Connecticut steep grant 2012 in the amount of $100,000, and to authorize the first selectman to execute such a grant agreement with the state to increase the handicap accessibility to Jennings Pavilion. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. White, if you'll step us through what you have in mind.
Yes, good afternoon. The goal of the project, obviously, is to increase the accessibility at the Jennings Pavilion and area. And there's four components to it. The first is to construct these handicap parking spaces in this area here and here. Currently, they're way down here. And this would be done with the same technique we're using at Penfield, the pervious pavers, which are friendly to the environment, that allow the water to seep back into the ground. The next component is to upgrade the two restrooms that are in the facility itself, including, really rebuilding the interior facility. They're in tough shape, so it'd be replacing the fixtures. Right now, it is handicap accessible old code, and this would be bringing up to the current code with the proper spacing for the facilities, et cetera. And the next feature would be to put a new handicap ramp down to the tide mark. It's made out of high-density plastic. There are sections that connect together, and they go from the existing handicap ramp that's made out of concrete on the deck here, again, down to the tide mark. And the final component is just miscellaneous features that need to be addressed to make it ADA accessible. For example, the concessions where the counter is, would have to be lowered so someone can access it from a wheelchair. There's some minor features like that in around the facility that we need to do. The total project cost was $135,000, $400. The steep grant is for $100,000. The, I had $34,400 for in-kind services, which is simply our in-house labor to do the work on the restrooms. There's $50,000 out of this budget to buy the materials, but we would do the work itself. Similar to what we just did at Lake Mohegan, we finished a project up there, if you have a chance to look at it, where we upgraded the restrooms with our crew. And then we had $50,000 in HUD funds to put in concrete pathways around the facility so that people can access the water, the restrooms, the parking lot, the children's park area, the water park, et cetera. The goal is to keep, you know, working at our facilities to increase their accessibility. And if you look back over the last year, Penfield Pavilion, when that was built last summer, is completely accessible, a really good example of an ADA facility. As I mentioned, we've done Lake Mohegan this winter, and that's right now. And this was, we targeted this one because this is the next high-use beach facility. So it's a good project. We appreciate your support for it.
All right, thank you, Mr. White. Any questions from the board? Kristin?
Thank you very much, Mr. White, and I'm happy to hear that our goal is to continue improving and making our facilities more accessible. That's wonderful. My question is about the, two questions, actually. First is about the pavers, permeable pavers, which I think is wonderful from an environmental standpoint. From a practical standpoint, what kind of experience do people have with those and the use of wheelchairs? And I'm thinking about when I go running and I see the sidewalks where trees roots have grown. I know we don't have trees here, but how solid and secure are they? How much movement will there be? Will they remain nice and flat for people who are coming out in wheelchairs and walkers?
They are put in, like they're being put in down Penfield now. The area is excavated out a foot and a half or so, and this is sand that's not awkward, so it's very drainable material. But the, you backfill in with stone and that, so it's very drainable, and these things are locked in and set in that material, so you don't get the frost heaving. You'd get on like a sidewalk, or, and there's certainly no trees that would even up. So we expect that this will stay, it's installed very even, and it should stay that way. And so it's a good service for a wheelchair, walker, things like that.
The other question is about the walkway, same kind of idea. Just because I actually watched an elderly person at a meeting the other night, you know, even the littlest bumps can be difficult, and I'm wondering about the rampway, they piece together almost like puzzle pieces?
Yes.
And will that be navigable enough for folks?
It's a little trickier, in the sense that, you know, you're putting this, laying this on the sand. They do lock together. You can't set them up to be at the right pitch and very even, but it does take attention during the season if the tide mark after a storm comes up and undermines them. You do have to go back and reset them to keep them even. But we feel that we can keep it the way it should be. I don't have it shown here, but it ends in like a T arrangement, so people can turn around, navigate back towards the facility. So it'll take some attention, but I think we can make it work.
Okay.
Can I ask one more follow-up?
Go right ahead.
That's what they're made for. It is made for handicap accessibility on a beach area.
That was, my question was essentially, is that kind of industry standard for this kind of thing?
Yes.
Is this the material? Okay, great, thank you very much.
Mr. Walsh?
And this is going to be the same that's done at Penfield, correct?
The pavers, yes.
Not the pavers, I was actually talking, continuing on with the handicap ramp that's there. There's one down that leads to there, and I think that was brought up by a member of the public when we were first going through this, Jerry. I don't know if you remember, there's an older woman who used to take her husband down to the beach every day, and she was only able to get so far, because she couldn't get anywhere. I think, it might have been your department that placed them there.
Right.
But they worked great, and I see her often down there with her husband. And I think it's a great thing. And to me, I've seen them in operation, and they seem to work great. I mean, that plastic that they're made of is very durable. Obviously, you know, there must be some work or smoothing out over the time, but they seem to be a great solution, especially with water and sand and things like that, and not running out and stuff like that.
Yeah.
So I thought it worked out great at Penfield, and I'm glad you're doing it down here at Jennings.
Any further comments?
Are those actual size of the pavers?
No, it's not.
I was going to say, a little large.
Okay, if we go to the public?
Yes.
Any comments from the public? If you would come up to the mic and identify yourself, please? It's the price you pay for freedom of speech.
My name is Joan Neely. I just wondered, this is the pavement, is that two-way, so that someone would not only be able to go down, but turn around and come back? I mean, if someone were going down and someone were coming back, would they, is it like a double lane?
Is it a two-lane?
Two-lane, is it a two-lane? Yes.
I don't believe so.
What if someone were going down and someone wanted to get back up? That would be-
Yeah, I know.
I would, think it would be a more, a practical thing to have it a two-way, have room for two different-
That's something we'll look at, because right now, it is limited in the sense that-
Thank you.
There is a T down the end where people can stage and turn around and back.
Turn around.
And, but it is a good point, because when you do a handicap accessible ramp, it is required after, this, it wouldn't be required to this, because it's a special application, but they usually, after 200 feet or so, they have a, an expanded area where people can cross reasonably. So we'll look at if we can double them up somewhere with that in mind. Maybe a couple of stations, one station here, one station there. It's a good idea.
All right, thank you, Mr. White. Any further comments from the public? All right, seeing none, back to the board. Any further comments here?
No.
All right, we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. White, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Lombardo, thank you also. Let's see, that's done. Next up, Sherman School renovation update. To hear, consider, to hear and consider an update from Rich Speciale regarding the Sherman School renovation project. Rich, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the mic. Thank you for joining us today.
Okay, Sherman School, Phase One is complete. We have a TCO, which is a temporary certificate of occupancy. There is a number of items that are on the punch list that still need to be addressed. These will be undertaken once the school is empty, which is expected June 21st. Phase One is on budget and on time. Phase Two will be starting, we're going to have a kickoff meeting on the 13th of June. We are going to move the furniture and all of the various artwork and pieces that the children have created with professionals. This is going to occur on the 22nd, day that the school closes, 22nd, 23rd, and into the 25th, skipping that Sunday if time requires. Basically, the FEMA portion of the job is done, and we are well away from our FEMA upset figure. There is some transite board that has to be removed in about a 20-foot area where we are going to be reinforcing the structural steel beams. We are going to do that, once again, after the 21st, when the school is emptied. There should be very little in the way of additional soft costs, and the same, I would hope, true for any unexpected contaminant. We have a completion date, a hard, fast completion date of August 17th, and we are going to do a review on August 1 to make sure that that date is attainable, that we're not going to have a problem with that. Otherwise, we will take dramatic action at that particular point. That's about it as far as the schedules and where we stand with the school.
Okay. I think that, thank you. The board has had a chance to, I think, in different trips, we've all had a chance to, to with the school, but there were a couple items that were pointed out on the punch list, I'm going to assume are on the punch list, and perhaps just to kick off the conversation, if I might.
Sure.
There seem to be some issues with the floor and the administrative area being tilted a bit and not being quite level. What's the story on that? And how's that going to be addressed?
The, if I think, if you're talking about in the entrance, it's not exactly the floor that's tilted. It's the finish.
It feels like the floor.
All right. As far as I know, there's a finish that's, that's not actually completed as far as the tiles.
If you go from the administrative office and you walk to Mrs. Roxby's office, you feel like you're going down a slight ramp?
This is the first I hear of that. I'm not aware of that.
Okay.
When speaking to Mrs. Roxby, she said she knows about the, that issue that Mr. Tetra's brought up, and that the floor is going to be completely redone over the summer. Is that correct?
That's true.
Because somebody's got to get that on their punch list. I guess I'm concerned that you don't know about that.
Well, perhaps, just to help one thing a lot, perhaps you could take a look into that, and we can report back as to where that stands. Because that seemed to be a pretty popular topic of discussion.
Oh, is that the tile, like, water damaged? Oh, okay. That, that I'm aware of. That wasn't what I thought you were explaining. Yes, we're aware of the water damage. Some of it had occurred, has been fixed, and we are going to address this other problem.
Okay. So that's a, that's tile that's been damaged by the water?
By water, yeah.
Okay.
There's a certain period of time that has to elapse in the drying process, and that's exactly what caused that. We know the cause, we know the effect, and we're going to repair it.
Okay.
Follow-up?
All right.
Just to make sure we're all talking about the same area. If I'm standing with my back to the folks who sit right inside the door, the school secretaries, and I'm walking down the hallway, there's an area right there, as Selectman Walsh described, I would describe it as wavy. Is that the area that we're, that you're talking about? So that, what you're saying is that what happened in the application of the tile is there was damage done by water in the application process?
There's, if I recall, that's a concrete area over there? Yeah. All, all concrete maintains moisture, always. It always maintains moisture. When you apply various gluing apparatus on the, on the concrete, you have to be cognizant of the actual moisture of the concrete. And there's moisture meters that we have, that we can measure the concrete moisture. The contractor put it down too soon, and the, it was not allowed to evaporate it off. So that's the technical explanation of it anyhow.
Okay. May I follow up again? So to clarify, that area where there was moisture damage in the application by the contractor, that is going to be rectified during the summer by the contractor at no additional cost.
Correct.
To the building committee.
Right. Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Just to follow further up on the, on the floor, just so that there's no confusion, the entire floor in the administrative area is going to be perfectly flat, correct?
I can't guarantee anything's going to be perfectly flat. In, in concrete construction, you have to have lasers, you have to have, that's an art in itself. Perfectly flat without doing floor flatness testing? No. You cannot guarantee that. Floor flatness testing is, is a highly technical capability that contractors have. I'm sure that that was not specked out on this particular job.
Did we pay for a flat floor?
You would pay. You would pay for a flat floor.
We paid for a flat floor.
Yeah.
So you...
But not perfectly flat.
You or your committee, you or your committee is going to make sure that we have a flat floor in the entire administrative area prior to signing off on this budget.
ACI standard, yes. American Concrete Institute standards.
Okay. All right. Thank you. One of the other points that was brought up is, is one of the main, I'm going to call it selling points, but really objective of this project was improving the security access at the entryway. And it seemed that when we went through, we were missing some locks on the doors to fully control that. But also that the administrative area was set, we built a window and then had, set up the desks so people's backs are to the windows, so that makes it harder to, what's the, how are we going to address that since security was raised consistently as one of the top three objectives of this kind of renovation?
Well, as far as the electronic security, that, that's not what you're talking about. You're talking about actually a visual...
I'm talking physical, physical security.
Yeah. There was a problem with the, with the case work, if you will, or the, this, the cat, the wooden entranceway at the entrance.
The first two things that come to mind is, is when we went through, one is that the doors don't have the locking mechanism to force people to come through the office, as it was described to us. And then, second, the people that are supposed to be observing people entering the building, their desks are set up so their backs are to the, the window that we spent a lot of money to build. So I guess I'm trying to understand the layout of the office area.
Trying to recall exactly. I'm going to have to look at that.
What I think Mr. Tetra's trying to refer to, if you might, don't mind, is that instead of using TVs and stuff to monitor things, the secretarial staff was supposed to be able to see who enters the building or not. So they were supposed to look out a window that was put on plans to be able to see who was coming into the building and who was not. If you walk in there now, the windows are there to look out.
Right.
But the way the desk is set up, the woman's back is to the window.
Or the person's back.
The person's back, but currently there's a woman working in that position. Because I spoke to both of them on Friday. Now, they tell me that they might try to turn that around, but I guess what is the proper design of that? Wasn't designed so that...
There's been a number of changes in the design of that. There's been quite a bit of redesign that was done on that. That's more, I think, Sally, you can probably address that better than I.
Ellie, you mean Mrs. Roxby?
Mr. Morabito, would you like to come up and take a hand at that?
I'll ask if you would.
Mrs. Roxby? Okay. From the mic, if you would, and if you'd be kind enough to introduce yourself.
Certainly. I'm Eileen Roxby, the principal at Roger Sherman. Yes, we are, right now, we're just, we moved in to be functional, but in the summer, we're, we're actually changing the desks around so that one will be facing directly at that front window, and the other one will be moved over more. There was a little bit of a miscommunication about the size of that area due to impediment from the radiators. And so when we ordered the furniture, it didn't quite fit, so we just put it in there to fit at the moment, and we will change that in the summer. But the, the locks are not on the doors at, at this moment. So that's something that Mr. Special could talk about.
Okay. And that, and if you address that, and then also the fact that, I guess, the radiators are right there by the window, which if you're going to have somebody look, setting their desk up against that, that's...
There's a piece that, that is actually protruding out. That is, there's not going to be anything that can be done about as far as I, I can determine. It's just there.
Was that radiator put there as spec?
Yes.
So the radiators are spec to be that big?
Yeah. But, you know, there was an existing condition, and I'm not quite sure where, there's no fix as far as I know, as far as that radiator goes.
Okay. And then, from a security standpoint, the locks are due in...
THP's got them on schedule. I don't know when they're coming.
Okay. All right. Any follow-up questions on security access at the moment?
No, I have follow-up questions on the radiators, but...
Close enough?
So if we want to deal with that wall over there.
Close enough? Go ahead.
Number one, that radiator that's there, that's currently behind the secretary who's currently working there, now we're going to be turning her desk to the radiator, which I guess we'll be blowing at her. I'm concerned about that being some type of workers' comp case coming down the road. One. Number two, from what I understand, the first thing that was done there prior to the radiators put in is that there was electrical outlets put in. The electrician came in first and put in the electrical outlets, and there's CAT 5 outlets. And those are located currently behind the radiator, and there is no current access to them. So we paid to have outlets put in, but then we covered them up with radiators. How is that done, and is that on an architectural plan?
I believe it was on the architectural plans, and it...
So it showed an outlet being installed, and then a radiator being put up, so you couldn't use the outlet? That was on the architectural plan?
I believe so.
Really? Is the architect here?
No.
I think so.
Yes.
You address that?
If you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium, identifying yourself and addressing the question, sir.
My name is Craig Wiles.
Well, if you could say that into the mic.
My name is Craig Wiles. The, the issue with the data drops, they're going to be put in over the summertime. Like, all units, like, all rooms, radiators are put on the exterior part of the wall. That's how, that's how it works. And these covers aren't solid, so there's space behind them. So when you take that, take the front cover off, the boxes are still there. So the boxes are going to be junctioned and brought down so they can have access. They were, we were on the gun to get this turned over, so that stuff was going to be fixed after, in the summertime, and that is part of the punch list. So these front covers, they can come off at the school, they can be taken off, and there's still access to that box, and the wire is there. It just has to be extended down to make it accessible. The reason those were there, the engineer had them there, and we had forethought of putting other data drops in the, well, the principal and other... And the reason the, the layout for the secretaries, that came from the central office. All the furniture and stuff and all that stuff came from the central office. We reviewed it for ADA access. So where the layout was and all that, where they sit, that didn't, that came from somebody else, so.
Okay. When the outlets and CAT 5 outlets, both electrical and the CAT 5 outlets were planned, was it planned that the radiators would be right in front of them?
Yes. Yes, they did. Mm-hmm.
And why was that?
Because the way that it's set up, the exterior wall, that was the own, that was the wall that was originally picked.
Okay.
So we went back, or, when we went through all the plan review, that was the, the most, the spot that was picked.
Okay. And why weren't the drops done then at the same time?
Well, because they weren't extended through the radiator, because they, we had other ones in the room.
Okay.
So that's why, and they're going to extend them over the summertime. Some of the, some of the radiator covers, I don't know if you've been there, they're unpainted, those are just temporary. So they're going to, there's a lot of stuff that they've, that's on the punch list. I have a long punch list.
So when the office staff is supposed to be monitoring security out the front, there was no thought by anybody involved in the process that maybe we shouldn't have a radiator right in front of the window that we're going to put a desk against?
That wasn't, that's not what, the radiators go around the whole outside of the perimeter of the building, even in the front, on the side, the whole perimeter. That's how it's heated, hydrophonically. So like this, this is forced hot air, so you can put the ducts up here. So, yeah, it's just the way it is, all heating, it's always on the exterior wall.
Is there airflow, blows, blowing through these? Or is it just natural...
No. It's water. It's pumped, just like it's our steam. Just like over at Roger Sherman, it's a steam, hot water.
So basically, if we want someone looking out that window, there's going to have to be a little warmer in the wintertime, I guess?
Well, yeah.
There's no other architectural solution to that problem?
Not to, to supply the heat, not in, not in the system that's there at the school.
All right. Okay. All right. Thank you. Mr. Special, if I might, the other kind of item that was pointed out was what's called that pop-top, what has the two-story windows, it seemed, and, and, two-story might be a bit of an exaggeration, but the, the really tall windows that go much higher than one story.
Right.
And it seemed to be referenced that that wasn't something that the building committee wanted, but it was done anyway. Can you kind of give us some background on that?
No. The, this, this visual aspect of the building was, was discussed by the committee, and the upshot of it was, is that we actually did lower by, by better than three feet. There was a certain look that the architect was going for, and he did not simply want a box, he wanted the accent to be in the entranceway. And it is a 53-year-old building, we're trying to modernize it a little bit, bring it up through, and it was his design. So we did alter some walls, we did some engineering, value engineering on some walls, where they were eliminated. The committee ultimately changed it, authorized the changing, shrinking of it, so that it wasn't quite that expensive. But the architect has a certain, he is the professional, he is the one that we hired to design buildings for us, and that was the look that he was going for.
Yeah. My question, at least as it was related, was more to the fact that the architect at some point does work for the town and the building committee, that it was, as I understood it, the building committee didn't want the windows to go up that high because it increased the cost, and they were looking for a more cost-effective solution.
No, that's not true. The, the case, we very thoroughly investigated the heat and air conditioning through our mechanical engineers. These, the, this, the roof is an R38 rated roof, okay? The, the units that were selected were carefully chosen by the mechanical engineer for their capability of heating that particular area. We are using ERVs, which is energy recovery ventilations. We have affected a big savings by having these energy recovery units in there. We also got a rebate from United Illuminating, which we'll, we'll be getting, I think, a bonus of about $10,000. And the calculation as done by the mechanical engineer indicated that the, the amount of heat or cooling variance will be very, very minimal.
Okay. My concern, and what raised the question for me was, and you seem to be clarifying it, was that this wasn't the committee's intent. What you're telling me is the, the pop-top, as it was built with the cloud ceilings, et cetera, was built per the design specs and with the approval of the building committee?
Yes.
Any questions on that, or is it okay to move on to another item?
I'm fine with another item. I have other questions.
All right. We're also shown a mechanical screen that comes down electronically powered, that comes down from the ceiling, and we're told that cost approximately $5,000. And again, related that it wasn't a request to the building committee, it's not in the ed spec, and wasn't something the staff wanted. Can you fill us in on some background on that?
Yeah, yeah. The actual cost of the, the unit is $3,490, which is pretty close to $5,000. Whoever estimated was that, that far off. It was clearly on all the drawings, okay? These drawings were bid on by the contractor, the, the spec, the cut sheets on, on, were, were as per spec, they were presented to various people that need to look at this stuff.
So when you say as per the drawings, you're telling me that the $3,000 mechanical electronic screen was in the ed specs?
It was on the drawings.
And how did it get on the drawings?
The architect put them there.
How did the architect decide to put it there, and who approved that?
The, the architect put it there because that was what he was designing. That's, most, all the conference rooms that I go into nowadays, if they're not shining it directly on a wall, they do have a drop-down. I mean, that's, that's the, that's...
Okay. Is there any reason we couldn't shine it directly on the wall?
I'm not sure that you could in that particular room, because it is configured kind of narrowly, right? Isn't it?
Well, that's why we spent $5,000 to put a automated screen on a very narrow wall. So, yeah, I was wondering about that, too.
Am I right about that being narrow and not capable of...
It's, that's definitely the short side of the room. Yes, you're absolutely correct.
Yes. We've, we've actually used it the other day without the screen.
So I guess, what I'm looking for is a rationale on why we spent $3,000, and from a design standpoint, why we put a wall phone on a wall that we're going to drop down the screen, and it's our understanding that when you drop down the screen, it's going to hit the phone and not let the, so, again, I'm getting back to the design issue here.
Yeah.
What, what's going on with that?
Well, I, as I said, I don't design it, you know, we just...
Is the architect here to address that question?
I can answer that, yes. That phone...
Excuse me. If you'd come up to the mic, sir.
Sure. That phone is there.
If you would wait until you get to the mic, sir.
That, that phone is there due to the building department. As you walk into a room...
Yeah.
The, the, the phone has to be where the door swings at the end there. That's, that's just a code issue.
Works for me. Why is the screen there?
The screen is there because.
And why did we spend $3,000 on the screen?
Uh, well, I, I don't think it's even that much, but I could argue that. But that's okay, that's all right. The reason was, I, I, like Rich was saying, it's in every conference room, so when we went.
I'm sorry, could you name another conference room in the school system that has one of those?
Um, I, I don't know, because the.
Don't tell me, you just said it's in every conference room, sir.
Okay, this, this part of the school, though?
Yes.
Is, is considered B, so it's not E. E is educational, B is business, so that's, if you look at the drawings, there's a, there's a firewall that goes through the school.
So we spent $3,000 on a non-educational function for a school?
No, that's, it's, it's, that's considered business.
Right, we spent $3,000 on a non-educational function for a school, sir, that's what you're telling me?
I, I don't, that, that was, it was always on the drawings, so if there was an issue.
Who put it on a drawing, sir?
We put it on the drawings, but it came.
Whose approval did you get to put it on a drawing, sir?
Everybody's approval, 'cause.
When you say everybody, you said it's gonna cost $3,000.
The, the building committee, we got the, we sent the drawings to central office.
Building committee says they didn't put it on the drawing, sir.
Okay, but we put it on from direction of meetings with, that we had with the school, people at the school, the, the board of ed, with the building committee, so we were just not.
Are there some minutes that show that, sir?
There is, I'm sure there is.
If you could, if you could.
Sure.
Dig those up, that would be helpful.
Sure, yep, that was probably from about two years ago.
I don't care when it was, sir.
Okay, that's fine.
The question, the question that's come up repeatedly is why did we spend that much money on a screen that doesn't have any educational value for the students, when a couple hundred dollars would've done the job?
You're right, you're right, but it's, it's, wasn't just put in there, it would, there's a process.
And then we put the phone on the wall so the screen won't work.
Well, I told you why the phone, 'cause when you open up the door, the phone has, that's a code issue.
I'm sorry, but I thought the job of the architect was to make sure those things all kinda work together.
Yet they do, because that's where the phone has to go.
And the screen will work even though the phone's there?
I'm sure it will, yes.
So nobody's tested that yet?
I have not gotten it down yet, because it doesn't work, so I don't know how, everybody says it doesn't work, and that's on punch slot item list. So I don't know how it hits the phone when, I've been told it doesn't work.
So was the phone designed to be there?
It was, because it's a code issue, the building department requires it to be there.
So the phone and the screen were designed to be there?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
And do you do any value engineering as part of your work?
Oh, yeah, we did a lot of value engineering, and I, and.
Is there any reason this wasn't value engineered out?
I have no idea, no, I can't answer that. I can't.
Okay. Obviously, obviously it's a concern, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but on the other hand, I do mean to put you on the spot.
No, that's fine, but I think, I think we had talked, Rich and I had talked during the day today, that, I mean, if it's that big of an issue, we could take it back, take it out of the ceiling and get a credit for it, and return it to the supplier and get a, you know, it's probably a recharge stocking fee, but take it out, and we can look to get a credit. That's, that's.
So far, we've heard from the principal.
Well, maybe that's the directive that we should look to.
A member, the chairman of the board of ed, and I believe the chair of the building committee, that they weren't in favor of it, so.
Okay, but I, that's kinda news to me, and the unflo, the unlevel floor, that's news to me, too. So, it, this is all kinda new, so we had talked about taking the screen out and getting a credit, so maybe that's the directive that we go.
When was the last time you walked through the administrative office?
I was there last week. I was doing my punch list, with, Eileen was there, just before, so that was, no one ever brought it up, don't say, hey, what's this over here, so, I don't, it's kinda news.
The floor's not on your punch list, then?
It is not on my punch list, 'cause I didn't see it.
I'd bring a couple marbles with you the next time you go by.
That's fine, yep.
Put it down on the floor, and you'll see him roll towards, uh, Mrs. Roxby's office.
Yep, and if I might, Mr. Special, if you'll make sure that the building committee puts the screen on the agenda and, of your next meeting, and if it's not something that's educationally necessary, and we can get our $3,000 back, let's please do that. Or let me rephrase that, if you guys would please consider a motion to get our $3,000 back by getting rid of the screen, not to overweight our.
Just to follow up on your comments.
Go right ahead.
I think, Rich, you should take a look at that wall. I mean, basically, we have a white screen that's gonna come down, and you have a white wall behind it that's extremely large, and I think Mrs. Roxby can show you the equipment's in place to do broadcast there, and I think you'll quickly figure out that, that will go. I don't even think it would ever be used, to be quite honest with you, because it's just easier not even to hit the switch to have it come down, because it's a white wall that's 10 feet away from where it would broadcast. So I would concur with the first selectmen, that I think that it'd be great if we can get our money back, hopefully it'll be more than $3,000, but it doesn't even work as it is right now, so it's time to deal with it.
All right. If I might, going down the brief list here, on the pop top, the ceilings, it looks like there's some exposed beams, looks very unfinished at the top, is there, can you fill us in on what the design issue is there and what we're trying to accomplish with that unfinished wall?
We have gotten pricing from painting contractors, various contractors, to do a fix, which would be an architectural fix. We're not going to do that until we are practically done with the project, because we don't wanna go into any funds that we don't have. We're gonna bring this project in on time and on the budget. If there's money left over, which I think there, it's a reasonable assumption that there will be, then, then we'll put before the committee, and in concert with the opinion of the, the staff that has to use it, will, will accomplish what they would like.
Is there some reason the beam, the roof, the nails were left kind of exposed the way they are?
Um, that's what was shown on the drawings. We got what the drawings showed.
Okay, that's not exactly what I asked.
There is, there is the possibility of having a contractor clean up some, some markings that were made during construction process, various felt pen indicators are put on the metal decking, the, I think there's some penetrations that could be addressed.
The way that area is described to me by somebody who saw it, I think, who accompanied Mr. Walsh on that prior tour, was, it just looks unfinished, like we forgot to do it. Is there some reason it was designed to look unfinished and like we forgot to do it?
The architect designed what's up there, okay? It's, I believe he was going for an open look.
Okay, if we can, Mr. Architect, if you'd fill us in on what we were starting to do here.
Uh, that, that came down to budgetary restraints. We were under a tight budget for this job, and we did not see that that was an important area to spend money on, is painting a small area that you see as you walk into two rooms, so that's, that's what that came down to, it's budgetary. And we were going for the exposed look of, that was the look that we were going for.
The steel beam rusts, right, naturally?
No, no, they're primed, that, that color is, it's a primer paint, that reddish, that's a primer.
Okay. And the numbers that are still written on there from somebody who's doing the measurements?
That's what he's talking about.
And the black, the black, the black screw, I think they're screws, not nails, that come through the corrugated top roof that is silver, and it looks like basically spikes coming through the corrugation, the corrugated steel, or that's what that is?
Yeah, they're studs, they're all studs. It's, yeah, it's.
I mean, we've had a number of building projects, many of us have been on, seen these building projects, gone for tours, and I think it was Mr. Flynn's comments, last night, you said it was unfinished, unfinished look. I've just never seen a building that we've ever built that's looked unfinished as that, where you actually look up and you see a steel beam, where you see what screws coming through. I have to say, I also had some concerns with, is it called a cloud top or something like that?
Yeah.
It seems like all the heat would rise up into that space that's being completely unused.
No, when you stepped out of the room, I was going into that detail with, with Mr. Picture. The, the roof is an R38 roof, okay? The building was designed, the administration areas were designed with 20% more energy efficiency than the actual basic building code requires. Everything about that building was designed in accordance with the Green Building Council recommendations, so you have a very, very energy efficient building in there.
Well, I understand the energy efficiency is about releasing the energy into the atmosphere through the building roof. My question is, is though, that if you have an extra five or six feet, that's air that needs to be heated. I mean, it's still air that needs to be heated.
Yeah, but it's paint, in other words, once you get it heated, it's like, we're shutting off your air conditioning during the summer, and then by the time you recapture that temperature that you wanna get it back up to, you've, you've wasted all of that energy as well. In this plenum type of design, it's not that there's a loss, it's, it's all recaptured, so that if you, and that's the part of the energy recovery, the beauty of it is that, remember we were going through the board of finance, and, and you had it done an investigation about when we could expect to recoup the investment in the ERVs?
Yes.
That's why we do, why, we really wanted those ERVs, so that we could lower our expenses, and that's what we've accomplished. We're going to have a, a virtually a green building, or a green building in that particular area.
All right, so what are you planning on doing if there are extra funds available?
The, we're talk, we're talking basically about $5,000 to architecturally fix what most people find offensive, okay?
So it'd be Mrs., it'd be the conference room, Mrs. Roxby's room, and then the school psychologist, I think, is in the next room. It's basically all the rooms along the full front of the addition that base the street.
I think it's only, I think it's only two rooms.
It's the conference room on both, both sides of the room.
Conference room, your room, and, and one excellent, oh, okay, three rooms.
Yeah.
Not, not everything, but three rooms.
The whole front of the building, everything that's on the front.
Yeah, where the, the elevated areas.
Yes, Mr. Walsh, my mic.
Yeah.
It seems like the cost of that would be paid for if you chose to return the mechanical screen.
Could be pretty close, yeah, yeah. The, the screen is like $3,400.
All right, can, can we ask the architect what, we said we didn't finish that because of the.
Finished, sorry.
Because we didn't finish the ceilings because of cost issues.
Right.
All right. What was the design specification for the finishing? What were you gonna do if you had the money, and how much money would it take?
Uh, well, that, see, that's, that's the problem, if we originally had put it in the bid documents, you would've gotten a lower price, but now that it's gone out to bid, you're gonna get a hi, a little higher price, so I don't know what the difference would be, but we weren't planning on doing anything. That was all gonna just be, that was the look that we were looking for, something that invoked creativity. You saw what was behind the drop ceiling, you know what's there, instead of just a drop ceiling. That's what we were, maybe not everybody agrees with it, but that's what we, in our minds, were going for.
Was there anybody who agreed with that?
Oh, yeah, everybody did. So that's, and, and like Rich said, we had lowered the ceiling even by three feet, so.
Okay. All right, if I might, in one other area, unless there's a follow-up question on this. Rich, we also saw the, the conference room.
Conference room.
It was built right behind the admin area, kind of, and it was demonstrated that, that the walls didn't go all the way to the windows, so we had issues with privacy and, 'cause again, one of the functions described in the initial game plan was to create those rooms in order to have privacy, so.
Privacy, sure.
We could have that, there was a teacher conference going on when Chris and I were there today, and even with that, you could hear that conversation out in the administrative area. What's the scoop there, and why didn't those walls go all the way to the windows so we had the privacy that you would expect from a conference room?
We're very much, that's very, we're highly focused on that because it is unacceptable. We are, we're cognizant of that from day one, and there's not been a fix determined yet. We're not gonna let it go, we're gonna, we're gonna find out what the fix is, because it is, the noise migration is, is unacceptable.
Okay, I'll go back to the design. The windows were obviously designed to be there.
Yes.
The conference room was obviously designed to be there.
Right.
How is the wall and the window supposed to interface? Could the, could our architect help address that?
That plexiglass was, was a temporary solution.
Yep, I'm not asking about the plexiglass, go back to the drawings, what was on the drawings? How did we get the walls to interface with the windows to create the privacy?
There should've been a moly in there, like, just like on the, if you look at the other walls that intersect the front of the, there should be a moly in there, and I would talk.
Was that on the design and on the drawings?
Yes, yes.
What, can you fill us in on what happened there in terms of what happened to the missing moly?
Well, I, it, I, I can't answer that, but it's not there, so obviously, so.
Could you perhaps get an answer for that?
Yes.
And get a follow-up back to this board, so we can get an understanding, 'cause I gotta tell you, it, it just, the design looked pretty sloppy, and, and from a first impression standpoint, I'd hate to walk away with that conclusion without giving you a chance to, to address some of the concerns, but for the uninitiated, that our tour guide, Ms. Roxbury wasn't.
This is the first I've heard of this, because when we had a meeting with the, the building committee, the building committee seemed very happy with it, so.
Okay, well, perhaps this can be an educational opportunity. Those were the, the points that I came away from the tour, and I know since we both were on tours, if you had a couple others to bring up.
Sure.
And thank you for indulging me and going through the list.
No problem. The conference room, are those walls insulated?
Yes.
There's insulation between the walls, on, on all sides of the wall, other than the two walls that have windows on them?
Right, and those windows are one thick window, one inch thick windows, and they're, oh, they're aluminum with the thermal, thermal, they're thermally broken. In other words, there's a barrier or a battle between the break that further insulates it, so you had to.
So within the, within the two walls, I guess, the one that goes between Mrs. Roxby's room and the conference room, and the one that goes between the administrative area that has the door on it, there is insul, actual insulation between those drywall walls?
I'm just trying, yes.
Insulation on the interior walls of the administrative area?
I can't recall the drawings exactly, I think, I think.
Yes, there is, yes, there is, yes.
Thank you, sir.
So the only way that the noise is escaping is because of the plexiglass area where the, where the.
I believe it's going over, actually.
Going over where?
Over the top.
It's going over the top? How's it getting over the top?
There's a void up there.
There's a void on top, too?
Yeah.
And not only on the side along the windows, but there's a void along the top?
Yes, yes.
Could you explain how that design worked?
Um, that is fair, sign. On the, on the top, you know, on a pan, on the, on the deck pan, it goes like this, this is the, and this is the roof up here. The walls are coming up to here, and I haven't looked at to see if these, there's insulation in here, that's what I think Rich is talking about. These come up to the underside of the deck, this is the steel deck, so this deck has, so maybe this is.
So that's the corrugated deck that we see available, seeing the other.
Right, down, down here.
Yep, okay.
And this is the wall that runs up, and maybe this here isn't insulated. I haven't looked there.
Was it, was there insulation designed to be in that?
Yes, and in this wall, too.
So the contractor may not have.
Right.
Completely done it to spec.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
That's on punch list.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Mr. Walsh.
No problem.
Uh, the, there's a storage area, book storage area, where there's a skylight in it? Not in the administrative area, outside the administrative area, kind of heading into the nurses' area.
Any existing, any existing?
Well, it looks like a brand-new closet that was designed.
Yeah, I know where it is, I could probably answer this.
Okay.
That's on the punch list, that's a fire marshal thing, it has to be closed in with two layers of 5A sheet rock. Never gonna do that over the summertime.
So it'll be, it'll be completely sealed in?
Yep, that's a fire marshal issue.
And that's on the punch list?
Yes.
Okay.
They couldn't do that while the school's there, 'cause it's an occupied school, they can't make noise.
Okay. Uh, in the kitchen area, 'cause the new second line was developed?
Yes.
Okay. Um, one, there was a second line, on the, on the original line, I guess, um, there seems to be some type of, of compressor there that's on the thing, but doesn't have any drainage to it, because it's, the drainage plug is behind where the compressor is, do you know anything about that?
No, I don't, no, I don't.
Okay, well, they had to use a bucket to collect?
That's the first I've heard of this, too.
Okay.
It's the sink that's along the gym wall, or the all-purpose room wall.
So if you're standing in the all-purpose room looking at that?
No, I'm not talking about the kitchen, in the kitchen, in the...
Right, but that runs along that all-purpose room wall, that's where they, right?
Well, yeah, well, there's two questions. One is on the, on the other line, which I thought there was a new piece of equipment, and I don't know whether you know anything about this, but there's no, the drainage, and I don't know, Ms. Roxby, maybe you can explain, you took us on the tour. But it's, you have to use kind of a bucket down there, right? Because the compressor's actually, the hole's behind the compressor.
Right. The, the piece of equipment that was retrofitted, which is in the existing line, there, there was a compressor and a drain put in. The drain was put in right next to the compressor so that you can't really get a bucket underneath it.
Oh, can't get a bucket underneath it.
You have to figure out something. And then the other, the new piece of equipment, actually on the first day of use, there's no way to drain the water out, so it had to use a bucket, and a worker, and it's hot water, a worker slipped and, with a bucket in her hands.
Yeah.
So we need a way to drain that out. And that's something that I spoke with Sal about, and it will be coming up when we have our meeting on the 13th.
Okay, because there is a drain nearby in the floor.
It's right there on the floor, right?
Yeah, so it's gonna be a way to maybe retrofit it so that it drained right into the drain or something?
Right, even if it's a flexible pipe or something that we can use and roll back up or whatever, because it's just a danger.
All right, so you'll look at that, I guess? And I guess lastly was, there's, and I think Ms. Roxby said you're gonna, this is gonna be looked at, so I just want to raise the point. The, there's a, a water cooler, a water fountain?
Yeah.
That's in the lobby?
Yeah.
That's basically a long drywall that could possibly get damaged by kids using water right next to drywall?
Right, yes.
So you're gonna retrofit something around that?
Yes.
So that...
It's not decided yet, it's one of the items on the punch list, whether it's gonna be encased with a piece of plastic or whatever, it's yet to be decided.
Okay, okay. And my last question, I think, has to do with the work coming up.
Sure.
This whole situation with, because we're, the whole fresh air intake and the compressors or whatever that's arriving on site for that, or is it blowers or something like that?
Yes.
The weight of that is now gonna need to be reinforced with some type of support system, right?
Correct.
And I don't remember that being presented when it first came to this board of selectmen. Is that something that got discovered after the fact that this needed to be done?
Actually, no. What, what happened is that I was very intent on getting the ERB, because I truly believe in the green and the whole recovery thing. We investigated through the mechanical engineer, through Coastal, one of that, changing from the particular unit that does not have a very good reputation in the industry, by the way, and substituting it with another unit. We substituted it with another unit that was actually lighter than what was designed. I checked with the structural engineer because I'm being aware that I've changed the load to a lighter load, I might not have to do that reinforcing that I was telling you about throughout the building, behind the transit board. Turns out that he said that, no, he wants that reinforcing done. So, once the structural engineer makes his decision, you can't go against it. I mean, it would be foolish to do that, so.
Just to be clear, you're saying that was part of the original design though, to have that reinforcing?
Yeah, in fact, because the units that were there are actually heavier than what we replaced them with. So that was taken into consideration by the structural engineer.
So, just to ask Mr. Tetra's question again, from the very start of this, you always knew you were gonna be doing reinforcing. That's not an extra cost at all that needed to be found anyplace?
That's by design, the structural engineer's feet was, that included that from the get-go.
All right. All the questions I have, thank you. Kristen?
Thank you, Mr. Special. I just want to refer back to the committee draft minutes that I looked at from the May 21st meeting, and had some concerns, and it's a question about the furniture movement. And from reading the minutes, it sounds like there was some concern and conversation, and I'd like to just get your clarification. The cost of moving furniture out of 10 classrooms and storing it off-site, because there's no room to do so within the building, is an extra $25,000?
That's correct.
And that's an additional and new cost?
Yes.
And that there was some disagreement that Mr. Wiles, am I saying it correctly or Willis?
Wiles.
Wiles, okay. Suggested that it was not necessary to move the furniture out, yet there was another group who said that it did need to be done. The committee ended up voting to have that furniture moved out. Am I right that there was some?
Absolutely correct. The, the big issue, the biggest thing is that we have to deliver a building on time. There's no question about it. The contractor was, was claiming that he was going to protect through the use of sheeting and tape. From debris, we're going to be removing the ceiling tiles. You're gonna have a lot of, there's going to be welding, so there's a dripping of weld. There's just, the typical normal construction debris is going to be there, and it's going to, if we don't do this properly, we're going to contaminate all those little pieces in the room, books, whatever you got there, the computers in certain cases. So we felt, rather than risking delaying the job, because that would be an upshot of it, the contractor would, would probably claim that it was not his responsibility, well he had to do, was clear it. We elected to vote for the additional monies, which will not bring us over budget, be sure that nothing gets contaminated, and we don't delay the job.
Okay, so part of the concern, so I understand you're trying to protect the assets that are there and do the job on time. I'm just looking at the minutes that, where it says that one of the members noted that Part A ran 23% over because of asbestos abatement. She asked if the town has owed any money for Part A. Ms. Holland says she will find out and check with council. Ms. Purcell said it's hard to approve funding for Part B when the committee doesn't know how much money is coming back for Part A. Can you address that?
The, I remember that conversation, and Jane Purcell, I believe, was talking about the 23% that I think she's talking about, and that was, I think there's refinement on that to come up in later...
These are draft minutes?
Yeah, so there was a refinement coming up on that. And it's one of the things that I actually took exception to. I think we went way over the estimate on the asbestos abatement, because it was in the building and we had it, there was no, you can't not accommodate it, okay? As far as being over budget, no, we're not over. Actually, as it stands right now, we're under budget. But I'm not gonna say that we're under budget until I have those final dollars in, and very well might come, we're gonna be very close, but we might even be under budget on, on phase one. And I'm still not gonna do anything until we get the whole thing done, and then we'll address the architectural problem that we have and anything else that comes up. So there is an amendment to the minutes on that.
But I'm hearing you saying two different things, that you're still waiting for final figures, but we're under budget, so...
There are credits that are due us that we haven't gotten yet from, from the contractor. There is a possibility of a credit from, from the architect that we have yet to negotiate. It's gonna be a negotiated item. Possibly the offensive areas in the metal deck might be something that, that he might be willing to accommodate us on. Maybe he would be willing to go for the paint or whatever we do, whatever fix.
So for Part A, there are only credits that were eligible? There are no other extra expenses for Part A then? So in other words, knowing what you know now, the only unknowns are potential credits? There are no other potential costs for Part A?
There might be some invoices coming in that we haven't gotten yet, that I'm not aware of, that purchasing might have still. I don't think so, but there are people that invoice, you know, we got invoices in March that related back to December. So it won't be a lot, I can tell you that, but it is, I'm not gonna say that for 100% certainty.
So a more accurate characterization would be that knowing what we know today?
Right.
Part A is currently on budget?
Yes.
That's knowing what we know today, but that some of those things may change. You don't anticipate, actually what you anticipate is that it will be under budget, but we're not certain right now.
Slightly under budget, yes.
Okay, and so that's where my question came up in terms of Part B. One, the extra $25,000 for moving the furniture out. Two, I, and forgive me, let me just scroll down. The concern about any other unanticipated problems, here we go. Ms. Purcell asked what would happen if ceilings were opened up and something hazardous is found. Mr. Jago said THP already went through every unit and took photos. He said there shouldn't be any more COs. Is there room for unanticipated anything in, in the budget?
The, there's always, there's always a possibility. There's always a possibility of unanticipated, always in construction, especially we do alterations, always there. It's just the nature of the beast. We have done a pretty, since we had all of that unknown asbestos problems, as well as contaminated soils and, and other things that came up, that you just, you open up an area, you find that the bad soil is there, you have to do something about it, you can't just leave it. So there was that as well that ate up our contingency. There is the transit board that I described to you earlier, when I was describing the next phase, phase two, the 20-foot section. That has to come out. I'm hoping that there's gonna be no airborne particulate or anything like that during the process of it coming out, but if the contractor, and not THP, the specialist is sloppy and he does something wrong, we're gonna have to address that. There's always the unexpected, and that's why I don't want to spend any money until the project is totally complete.
Okay, my question was, do you feel confident that there is enough funding that if there is something unanticipated, which you just acknowledged certainly does happen in these kinds of projects, that there will be sufficient funds to address that?
Yes.
Okay, and I...
Rich, can I, I think at the end...
Excuse me, if you could take the mic.
I think at the end of the last building committee meeting, and Twig was there, and everybody was there, I think after all that you had all the asbestos and all the extra change orders from Part B, at the top of my head, I think it was $180,000 left in the contingency, and that broke down to, there's 10 rooftop units, so that broke down to, say, $18,000 a unit. So we felt that that was more than enough from THP's exploratory above the ceiling, that there was more than enough wiggle room there per classroom if we ran into something like you're saying. That's the way we saw it.
That Dick Jago that referred to, he's the, the owner of THP, actually.
Correct, sorry.
And one of the things that I said to him is that we can't suffer any more surprises. Make sure we get an accurate environmental evaluation of this building. And he's the one that's assuring us that, but again, I will not give 100% assurances because I'd be very foolish, my fault, because the unexpected could happen.
Okay. Any other questions at this time?
Comment, I may. Just, my comment is, and I think this is something we're constantly working on improving, is communication, because what I saw here today is we've had some breakdowns in communication, and I don't know exactly where that is, whether it's been between the school personnel and the building committee, but I just encourage that as this project goes forward, particularly because it is such a tight, such a tight window, such a tight budget, that we do, all do a better job in terms of communicating with one another so that our architect is not coming to this meeting, the board of selectmen, not the building committee, and finding out about being able to roll a marble down the floor. So I think we just need to all, I think, work together, and whatever, again, I will offer my assistance and support if there's anything that I can do to help improve that process. I, I just, we need to be careful with that moving forward.
All right. Any further comments from the board?
Yes. I think your building committee is gonna have to spend a lot of time on this punch list. There's a lot of stuff here, and there's a lot of stuff that you made a presentation on that you didn't bring up. One of these issues, none of these issues were brought up during your presentation. We had to sit here, based on going on our tour, and go through these things one by one. And I'm very concerned that our punch list be the exact same as the architect. You guys have gotta be lockstep with that, with that punch list. I'm telling you, lockstep.
I haven't seen the punches yet, Jim, all right?
Okay.
From the architect. We do have...
Mr. Walsh, if I might, just to address your concern, and I think it's a concern shared by the entire board. Mr. Special, when's your next building committee meeting?
The 13th. Oh, the building committee meeting?
Building committee.
On the list, on the name of the month.
Okay, so perhaps on July 5th, we could get an update on the punch list and several of the open questions that we asked here. I think that will give us closure to confirm that in fact that's the case. And if you could confirm there, what we're looking for, if I can paraphrase what Mr. Walsh said, is the building committee's confirmation that the architect, the school, the, the building committee are all on the same page, and if we could kind of have a review of that punch list, because of the genuine concern, I think, on this board, even though we're not as skilled or have the experience on the construction side, it, to the uninitiated, it certainly raised some concerns in terms of where we are with the project and what's taking place, and can we get it done to the quality that we were anticipating.
Right, I don't have the screen...
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Jim. I just wanted to get a closure on that.
The committee, myself, we're very cognizant of the fact that the, the punch list is long and auduous. We are quite aware of that, and I did not purposely avoid going into it, but we do have the final punch list coming out this Friday, I think, right? So once I get that in hand, then we can communicate and get the, everybody on the same page.
In anticipation, perhaps you could copy this board on some of that so we can just raise our comfort level. I get back to you, Mr. Walsh.
And also copy us maybe on your list of meetings coming up, so if we wanted to attend that, that would be great. Is there money being held back at all on, from THP for some of this punch list stuff?
Yes, yes.
So there's still money still being withheld or retained or whatever you call it?
We have a lot of money, over $300,000 at this point.
Okay.
Simply because we are concerned about punch lists and, and delivery of items. We're not gonna pay for it until they're actually on, on site.
Okay, and one, just last question about the pop-top windows. You reduce the size, your committee reduced the size of them by three feet?
About three feet, yes.
Okay. Originally, how high were they supposed to be, and then you reduced them to one size?
Well, when you get into something like that, Jim, it's, when you, steel comes in certain size, lengths, columns come in certain size of lengths, okay? So if you cut something back, first of all, is it economical even to cut something back beyond a certain point? Because a pound of steel weighs, it costs so much money. So, and it, and it's fabricated at certain lengths. So that's a decision that was, that the architect would, would say, okay, if I cut it back by this amount, and then with the loading and stuff like that, it's all taken into consideration. It's not something to say, oh, I think if I drop that three feet, it'll look a lot better. There's other items that come into the decision-making on, on that. So did the committee say, cut it back three feet? No, the committee didn't say that. Can you reduce the course? Can you engineer this down for us, Mr. Architect? Yes, this is what we did. And that's what the committee approved, was the new, new design.
Okay.
Any further questions from the board?
Yes.
Kristen?
I know that having a quorum has been somewhat of an issue. Are you confident that your next couple meetings, seeing as you're coming into the summer, you're really on a time crunch, are you confident that you will be able to have a quorum?
You're quite correct, and I call, I've been making numerous phone calls. We've been able to scratch together a quorum. It seems to be the basic same people all the time that show up for the meetings. I'm not authorized to fire anybody, you know, I have to live with what I got, I guess.
Okay, well, perhaps we can talk about that a bit offline if we might have some thoughts on how to improve that. Any further questions from the board?
No.
Mr. Special, I want to thank you. These were some tough and difficult questions and some rather direct questions, and I appreciate your patience and understanding and taking us through those. Look forward to sitting back down and perhaps we can talk in the interim about some of the forum issues and see what we can do to help there.
That'd be great.
Public comment on this, Mr. Tetra, or are you, because it's a report?
It's a report. I wasn't planning at this time. They'll be coming back, and certainly there are building committee meetings where folks can go and talk directly to the building committee.
Right, to some extent.
Unless you have a specific...
Well, I mean, just in case, I mean, we're going over a bunch of issues here. We've done it for an hour. If there's other issues, I'd like to know about them right now, if anybody, I mean, just to open it up to the public.
Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Walsh. Any comments from the public at this time? Come to the podium and identify yourself again, please.
I'm the Roxbury principal. I just wanted to say thank you for taking interest in the project. It's, I know that you, you hear from a lot of people and you hear a lot of issues, and I'm glad that you took the time to come over and, and go through this phase, so I appreciate, I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any further comment? All right, any follow-up from the board? Are we ready to go?
I think we're ready to go.
All right, again, Mr. Special, thank you very much.
Thank you, Rich, for your time.
All right, next up, banner request. To here, consider and act upon a request from Brickwalk Associates to hang a banner at Sherman Green. I believe you have both the original request, the form, and some questions filled out. This is a request for...
I'll make a motion.
For it, may I have a motion to accept?
It's all moved.
A second?
For discussion purposes, a second.
Okay, we're into discussion mode. All right, is there anyone here from Brickwalk Associates? So I guess it's just us.
I guess the, it's the issue here that doesn't meet the requirements because they're not a 501(c)(3) or some others civic organizations. I guess Brickwalk Associates is a for-profit, is there a landlord of various businesses?
I think that there are two things. One, it's my understanding, this, they actually requested that they come before the board of selectmen, get our take on this. Second, as per our guidelines, as we wrote up, I think we, we initially thought nonprofit, we backed off of that a bit and said something that promoted business in downtown or economic downtown would fit our criteria.
Yeah.
So as I looked at this, with a possible exception of, and I think we said once a quarter?
Yeah, I guess I just noticed that immediately, because...
Yeah, I guess I noticed that immediately, because...
And this is four times, it's, I don't know if we said once a quarter, four times a year, I'd have to go back and look exactly at the...
I guess a quarterly, but there was no date, I think, every, whatever, but there are...
So that may be one of the exceptions that...
But I don't know if it's Jennifer, or somebody figured out, two of these times are not available, so they're really, there's only two left, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So that kind of solves that problem to some degree.
Yeah.
Within that, assuming that meant that the quarterly thing, I would take a look at this based on my understanding of what our guidelines were, and would think this was okay, just because it's promoting downtown activity, promoting business and economic development, as we said, within that. But I'd be open to discussion.
My thought is, it looks like that if there's a booking issue, I'd request the second week of the dates shown, which I'm assuming is the Monday, July 2nd to July 16th.
Mm-hmm.
So I would say that we, you know, I'm in favor of that, and if there was a booking issue, in other words, if other events came up, or if there was some kind of crowding issue, not enough space for banners on that second week, that we consider that at that time. In other words, they get their first choice for certain, and then for that Monday, July 30th to August 13th.
I'll confirm with Nancy, but my take on this would be, there's no space available for the two-week periods in question, and it's only the middle two that are available.
Right.
And she'd be asking for the second week of those two-week periods.
Kristen, are you saying they definitely get one, but if there's space availability, they get the second one, but not, would not get priority, is that what you're saying?
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
I guess that's what she...
Whatever, I'm, I read this as the second week of the dates shown that they listed, so that their first choice is Monday, July 2nd to July 16th, whatever.
I don't think they are, because...
That's a two-week period.
They have four dates that they're gonna do this at, so they're looking, that's why they're trying to get the four banners, because they're trying to promote four different events. I mean, their banner's gonna change each time.
Gotcha.
So...
Then I give as a two-week window, and said, pick one of the two weeks.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with you that if it was one event, that they, that I would have a problem with them advertising it for four weeks, for one event.
Right, right, no, I, yeah, right.
I've been to this event, just from shopping in there, I've been seeing this car show, I have to say, it is a pretty good event. I mean, the number of cars they get to come in here, antique cars and things like that, is pretty good. Further, the vendors all stay, seem to stay open later. It seems to be there to promote those businesses, and in this case, because it's in the Brickwalk, it's not just one business, it's, it could be 20 or more, or more.
And potential restaurants.
Yeah, and, yeah, exactly. And I think, I found the whole thing, you know, when I went there, with, you know, especially my son loved seeing the antique cars. I thought it was a great event. They basically take the whole back parking lot, and they get like 40 or 50 antique cars that you're able to, yeah, go through. So I found it, you know, that it was happening downtown pretty good. I also liked the economic development portion of it, so I'd be willing to bend our rules in this appeal to support this, for those two dates. They're not gonna get every date, but at least they get two out of the four.
Yeah, they get, what this would look like is they get two weeks.
Yeah.
One week between May 28th and June, between July 2nd and July 16th, and one week between July 30th and August 6th?
13th.
13th, sorry. And it's my understanding, they're not bending our rules, though I'm going from memory, Mr. Walsh, is there something I'm missing on this?
No, I guess they're different events, in a way, but on the same time, this is, it seems as though it would breach the quarterly, how many times you could do a quarterly, because this issue came up when we were talking about Fairfield Theater Company, about every time they have a new show, do you get to put up a new sign? Whereas this would breach it on a quarter, it'd breach it for one extra time in a quarter. I think I could go along with it, because of the economic development and the number of stores it's gonna serve, and also the benefit to the community, who can see a free car show downtown without having to spend any money at all.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah.
I'm ready to vote.
Any further discussion?
No.
Okay, to go to the public? Any comments from the public? All right, thank you, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That's the banner request, boom. May I have a motion to accept the tax collector refunds?
Yes, they're all here, they were all.
All right, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that's done?
Jen, if you could just ask our new tax collector, she seems to be putting for each one a second signed version, which was never there. For every one, she has, she signs it twice, two pages, and Kristen and I, and previously, have only always done one, so it could cause potential confusion down the line, so if you could just tell her she only needs to, at least unless there's a reason why she's doing it.
I'll ask her.
But for every other, just show you the first one. If you take this one, see if we normally sign it right there, and every single one, she's putting a second signature. If there's a reason she needs a second one, we'll do it, but if there's not, just kind of redundant.
No problem, thank you.
All right, the next up, "To hear, consider, and act upon any communications." I have none at this point. Following that, "To hear, consider, and act upon any other business," which will probably come before this meeting, I have none at this point. Next up is a private executive session concerning pending litigation.
I'd like to ask to, I'd like to table it to the next meeting one more time, only because I postponed it to a date certain being the next meeting. We've been here a long time this evening, I'm gonna have to get going for childcare issues shortly, so and then we have an executive session we need to get to, so I'd prefer if we could just...
You're postponing the minutes?
Postponing the minutes.
Is there a second?
One more time.
Do we need to take it off the table to postpone it?
We'll take it, yeah, make a motion to take it off the table. I'm so moved to take it off the table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion to postpone those minutes until the next Board of Selectmen meeting in two weeks.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Done. Thank you, Jen.
Thanks, Jen.
Next up, private executive session, pending litigation. The town attorney, may I have a...
I'm so moved to go into executive session.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.